रेपु जरिगा आदिवारम् नायनामरी बल्लात्तमानु आराधवत्तमानुलो सकन नड़िपिंपु दाईसे मणि प्रजलंदरतो माटराडमणि नुमाटराडे देवुड़बाय आजादिगाल देवुड़ तेन्दे कानिकरिंसमणि ये वाले जरिगे कार्यकर्म रेपु जरिगे कार्यकर्म अंता निशेतले मैनका जरिपिंचे निवे अज्ञत चढ़ेगुण्डे प्रजलंदरतो माटराडमणि रावाल्चिन्वाण गोड़ सकालानु दिस्कोचे निवाद केमिंटानु सहायंगेमनि ये सनामन फाद्यत्तनाम तेन्दे
अमैन
ए विष्णुलो नु योगेत्लेने ट्वेंटी नाजीवितुमुन्नु नापकोम जिसकोनी प्राणिंस्टाइन गिर क्रोपचुक्तो छिन्नान बट मीके ओन्न नाल चलिस्तो छिन्नान प्रेमन देवा नी प्रेमन दासुर द्वारा ये मज्जम मामज्जीकी निसरेस्ट कर्मन माटल दिस्कोस्तो छिन्नार नाजीवितुमु माजीवितुमु परीक्षिंच्छु बटानकाई मैं मे ए स्थितिलो उन्नामो मग नापकोम जिसकुन्तो छिन्नार प्रवा मुम्म नम्म परिशोधिंच्छु बड़े वारिंगा सहायं चेंडी कृष्टे ममोलरायन मे सल्विस्तो छिन्नार मास्तिति कृष्टन्ने बन्दमेदा कटपड़तुन्ना लेदानी जिनिजिनम छुस्कुन्तो आत्मेमन जीवितुम्लो मे मुंदिक नड़ोबटानु सहायं चेंडी प्रवा मी प्रेमन में गुर्तेरगटानु क्रोपचुपिंचे मणि प्राण जिस्तो छिन्नान प्रवा मीर बुलोकुमुन्नु छिन्नारु कान मे रंतिगानु परिशोधिंच्छु बड़्नारु अमूल्यमन रायगमिचे बड़्तो छिन्नारु त्रुणेक्रिंच्छु बड़्तो छिन्नारु प्रवा मत्तो प्रवा गुद्दोबड़तो छिन्नारु ये नी चेस्तो छी तेन्दे येदिट अंगीक्रिंच्छु बड़्नपुडे प्रवा नालांटल्पुडु कोस्मो मे रंता क्राहिदनम चलिंच्छु नारो दान गुर्तेरिगी मे येदिट आद्मयन रुदिमतो नास्तिति निन सर्जेस्कुन्ना वाणिंगा सहायं चेंडी मास्तिति निन सर्जेस्कुन्ना वारिंगा सहायं चेंडी प्रवा नी स्वरुमायदु कोछिन्नपुडु मेम्म दान निन निर्लक्ष्य पेटकुण्डा मास्तिति परिषुदात्तुन्दे वाणिदिट अकन्परस्तुन्नपुडु प्रवा तकिंपुतो नी येदिटा मेम कड़कुन्ने सभावुन माक नेपिंचे मणि प्राण जिस्तो छिन्नान प्रवा निज्येव क्रियल विष्णुलो नेमी अंदकार क्रियल विष्णुलो नेमी प्रतिदिमी तेले जिस्तो छिर दुष्कार्यमलन तेले जिस्तो छिन्नार प्रवा नाजीवितुलो माजीवितुम्लो ए विष्णुलो मे उन्तुनामो एकड़मे मे दार्धंगुन्तुनामो मे मे उन्नामो लेमो सर्जेस्कुटानु सहायं चेंडी प्रवा मी रुद्यंत्रमुल परिशोधिंचे देवुड्वी मान्शलेदितमे मे वेदा उन्नोच्छमो कानी नी येदिट मात्रमे दार्धंगुन्तेने माक प्रतिफलमु ये दार्धंगा जीविस्तेने माक निचिराज्यमलो भूमानु मुंदी ना भूमानु कोल्पोनिकुन्न सहायं चेंडी प्रवा मायदिकु मी माटल चैत बलपर्चेंडी मज्जानकाल सम्मिलिदासु निलबड़तुन्नपुडु नी नोटी माटलु नाकुरकु माकुरकु ये देते मे सिद्धपरस्तो छिन्नारो आत्मदेवु चैत मायदिकु दिस्क्रांडी मुम्मल कड़तूरामनु प्राण जिस्तो छिन्नान प्रवा नी निवास स्थलमुला कटपड़तानकाई ए विष्णुलो योगेत्लेदी पुरुगुवंतु मायाडलमु चुपिन्ना प्रेमनु मरोक्सारिक नापकोम जिसकुनी नी येदिट साइगलपुड़ि कृतकनितास्तुतुल चलिंच्छुन्तो ए सुप्रवारतिना नमकमैन नावलन्ने प्राणिंस्टाइन वेटकु नाम तेन्दे
अमैन प्रार्थनतो ईमध्यहनकाल परिचरिण प्रारमिंस्कुन्तामु प्रेमगलिगिनु मातनरी परिषुद्रुवैनु मादेवा एसु कृष्टुवारी परिषुद्धमैनु नावुम्पेट अस्तोत्राल चलिस्तो उन्नाम देगलिगिनु मातनरी प्रार्थिंची आशिंचिनु मेरकु इदिनुमो रेवड़दिनुमो रंडिनालु प्रत्येकिंगा मामद्दिकुमी दयदासुलो सैम विलियम्स गार्नी मे रुद्दिस्कोचे नमी उद्देश्यमुन्नु बट्टीमी मुनस्तुतिस्तो उन्नाम एफएसए रंडू यरवेरंडु देवुनी निवास स्थलमु अनेमी स्रेस्टमैने ट्वेंटी गम्बेरमैने ट्वेंटी मी अम्शमुनु मागमनानी तिस्कुनु छी कृष्टि एसे मुख्यमैनु मोलराय युन्नाडनी आ एसु कृष्टुवारे पुनादिय युन्नाडु अनी उदेकाल सम्मिलो मेर माटलाडु छिन्ना मी जीव वाक्यमुन्नु बट्टीस्तो अस्तोत्राल चलिस्तुन्ना नमकमैन नातनरी देव दोतलतो मेरु निवासमुनिटानु किस्तपड़लियदु कानी पुरुहु वंटी अपवित्तलमैनु मानुवुनुतो मेरु निवासमुनिटानु किस्तपड़ी माकुरकाई मोत्ता बड़ीनु वाणिका त्रुणेकरिंपा बड़ीनु वाणिका मी सिलुव कार्यमुनु माकुरकु जरिगिंची मुमुनु मी निवास स्थलमुगा मार्चकोटानिकी मी स्वरक्तमिची कुन्नंदुको स्तोत्राल चलिस्तुन्ना स्थानिकिंगा बराकानु अनुवंद संघालनु मी निवासमुगानु मी स्वारुपितगानु मी महिमलो मीमुनु पोलिनु वारिमुगानु उन्डालनी मेरु मायाडला कलिगुन्ना मी नित्य संकल्पमुन्नु बट्टी सिरसुवंचे नमस्कारिस्तो अत्यपुनादु मेदा निज्येव क्रियलनु विडिची अंदकार क्रियलनु विडिची दुष्क्रियलनु विडिची निष्फलमैनु क्रियलनु विडिची विश्वासमुनको कर्ता दानी कोनसागिंचु एसु वाइपु छुचु विश्वासमुलो परिपूर्णतनु कलुगुचे एसु वाइपु छुचु विश्वासमुनु मुगिंचे एसु वाइपु छुचु मामुंदंचु बड़ेने ट्वेंटी आत्रा जीवितुम्लो वाक्यमैयुन्नु मीमुनु आधारण चेस्कुनी गम्यमु चेरुटु कुरकु मेरु माकंदिस्तुन्ने ट्वेंटी मी जीव वर्तमानमुन्नु बट्टीस्तो अस्तोत्राल चलिस्तो तिरिमध्यहन सम्मिलो कोड़ा कीर्तनुद्वारा मेरु महिम्पुंदचु तेरु बड़ीना काश्यमुनु मामज्यवंची मी परलोकुपुसुम हास्नमुन्नुची नामा करकलदी मी वर्तमानमुनु प्रसादिंची अत्यवाक्यमे कवदगस्नानमु चेत शुद्धीकरणतो मी निवास योग्यमुगा उन्डटुकु सिद्धपरस्तूरमणि अमेरिका प्रेसिडेंट बिल क्लिंटन भारतदेशमुलो रंड्रोजलुन्नटानिकी आदेशमु ईदेशमु यंत्तगा क्राहिंचिलिस्तो छिनाय सर्वाधिकारेनु देवुडुवेनु नीवु मातो निवासमु कलिगुन्नटानिकी मेरु चेस्ने ट्वेंटी आ प्राण विमोचना क्राहिदनमु एनटनटिकी अट्लुन्न वलिसनदे अंदुनी मित्तमै निज्यमैनु क्रियल विडिचु पेटुटुलो क्राहिंचिलिंचिनु वारमै मी सिलुव कार्यमुनु कलिगी मीतो निवासमुनुनट्लो मेरु मातो निवासमुनुनट्लो ई लोकसम्मनमैने ट्वेंटी तुच्छमैनु वाटिनी विडिचु पेटुटुलो कावलसनु मी क्रोपनु प्रसादिंची अमी गम्बेरमैनु वाक्यानुमयक साराम्शमलो मी स्वरक्तमिची कुन्ना ये वक्करु कोड़ा विडोबड़कुण्डा पालिवारगुन्नट्लो सिद्धपरस्तूरमणि नियालयमुलो अडुपेटिनु प्रतिमानिनु बट्टी पेर पेर नामी मुनस्तुतिस्तो इनकमी संकल्पमुलो निम्मेंच्छु बड़ीनु वार अंदरणी समकोच्चमणि वेडकुन्तो मालोचिन्न निमीर एरिगिनु देवुडु मी कप्पगिंच्छुन्तो मागमनालनु मेरे चरपट्टमणि मी माटविने हुद्दे आलोचिनु पुट्टिस्तुमणि मी देगलिगिनु स्थाल कप्पगिंच्छुन्तो विश्वासमुतो एसु कृष्टुवारी पेरिटा हुद्दे पुर्किंगा स्तुतिलपिंची प्रार्थिंची वेडकुन्तुनाम मातनरी अमैन चार्जन्ना सैमेलन्ना लोदरपालन्ना किशोरन्नारेंडी नालु गोंदला आरवे तम्मिदी नालु गोंदला आरवे आरु देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम नालु गोंदला आरवे तम्मिदी नालु गोंदला आरवे आरु मालु गोंदला आरवे आरु येड़वंद रान्फी अन्दिकुड़ा ओका नामरंद देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम याचकुला आराधनालयम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम अधिये मोरिया गुलगुतकण्डयु अधिये मोरिया गुलगुतकण्डयु इसकु बलियाँ पणस्तलमुनु अधिये मोरिया गुलगुतकण्डयु इसकु बलियाँ पणस्तलमुनु येवुसी यरुसाले मधे येवुसी यरुसाले मधे देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम याकुभु बलिस्तुने निवासमधि ए याकुभु बलिस्तुने निवासमधि ए आस्तलमेन्तो बीति गुल्पुनादी याकुभु बलिस्तुने निवासमधि ए आस्तलमेन्तो बीति गुल्पुनादी परलोक पुगविनी अधे परलोक पुगविनी अधे देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम सीलाई कोणदकै मोहस्यकु चूपिना सीलाई कोणदकै मोहस्यकु चूपिना परलोक प्रत्यक्षपु गुड़ारमधि ए मोहस्यकु कोणदकै मोहस्यकु चूपिना परलोक प्रत्यक्षपु गुड़ारमधि ए अपनिवंति आकारमुन्ना सलमादे अपनिवंति आकारमुन्ना सलमादे देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम दाविदु देवुनी गुड़ारमधि ए दाविदु देवुनी गुड़ारमधि ए तेजु महिमा निलोसु निवासमु दाविदु देवुनी गुड़ारमधि ए तेजु महिमा निलोसु निवासमु प्रभुनी प्रतिष्ठता पार्वतमधि प्रभुनी प्रतिष्ठता पार्वतमधि देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम येहो अपद्धनमु पादपितास्तलम येहो अपद्धनमु पादपितास्तलम इश्रायलु परिषुद्ध सीयो नधि ए येहो अपद्धनमु पादपितास्तलम इश्रायलु परिषुद्ध सीयो नधि ए सिगुरु महिमा भोसनम मगुनचट सिगुरु महिमा भोसनम मगुनचट देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम सजिवरालतो निमिंच बड़ुसुन्ना सजिवरालतो निमिंच बड़ुसुन्ना एसु निमानस मन्दिरमधि ए सजिवरालतो निमिंच बड़ुसुन्ना एसु निमानस मन्दिरमधि ए पिंडलिकुमात्य संगमोवधि पिंडलिकुमात्य संगमोवधि देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम गलिचुटा माली कलसिवेलुदमु कलागिचुटा माली कलसिवेलुदमु ए प्रोनु देवुनी महिमा मंदिरमु कलागिचुटा माली कलसिवेलुदमु ए प्रोनु देवुनी महिमा मंदिरमु मनदुक्कदिनामुलु समातम मगुनु मनदुक्कदिनामुलु समातम मगुनु देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम मुनुपटि महिमानु मिंचिना महिमातु मुनुपटि महिमानु मिंचिना महिमातु परलोकमुनुण्डी दिग्गिवचुचुन्ना मुदुपटि महिमानु मिंचिना महिमातु परलोकमुनुण्डी दिग्गिवचुचुन्ना नोतनाये रुसाले मधे नोतनाये रुसाले मधे देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम याचकुला आराधनालयम याचकुला आराधनालयम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम देवुनी महिमा मंदिरम
नालु गोंदला आरवे मुड़ू नालु गोंदला आरवे प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमतो परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेन
मरसंकेय एड़वंद लाइरे
प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु अप्पाराधमुलचे प्रजलंदरुनु देवुनी महिमानुत्कोल्पोईरी अप्पाराधमुलचे प्रजलंदरुनु देवुनी महिमानुत्कोल्पोईरी तनमहिमानु मनकी चूटकु तनमहिमानु मनकी चूटकु एसु प्रभुवे बलियायन एसु प्रभुवे बलियायन प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु कृपा सच्यमुलो समुनमुगान पनमज्यालो वसिंजनु कृपा सच्यमुलो समुनमुगान पनमज्यालो वसिंजनु तेन्दे महिमानु तनसुतुनिलु तेन्दे महिमानु तनसुतुनिलु मनमल्दरमु चूचितिमी मनमल्दरमु चूचितिमी प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभु इट्टिनी निमिचुचुण्डे प्रभु इट्टिनी निमिचुचुण्डे आयनमहिमा दानियन्तुल्डा प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु शांतिराजूइलु कटुचुन्नाडु मानवहात्तमु अंदुंडदु शांतिराजूइलु कटुचुन्नाडु मानवहात्तमु अंदुंडदु क्रयमुनीची सलमुकोनेनु क्रयमुनीची सलमुकोनेनु धानुकोरीना स्तलमधि धानुकोरीना स्तलमधि प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रत्यक्षपरस्तिना अत्मय इट्टिकी तनपुनादि नीवेसेनु प्रत्यक्षपरस्तिना अत्मय इट्टिकी तनपुनादि नीवेसेनु स्रक्षणादिविता सच्यमु द्वारा स्रक्षणादिविता सच्यमु द्वारा प्रभुवे सार्गमु चेसेनु प्रभुवे सार्गमु चेसेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु सिमहसनमु पई कुचुन्ना प्रभुवे अनगद्रोक्यनु शतुवुनु सिमहसनमु पई कुचुन्ना प्रभुवे अनगद्रोक्यनु शतुवुनु सम्मुनाजयमुतो आर्फाटमुतो वेलिगिचेनु तना इर्तिनी वेलिगिचेनु तना इर्तिनी प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु देवुनी इलु मोगिंचा बड़गा पैनुण्डी आप्नी दिग्गिवचु देवुनी इलु मोगिंचा बड़गा पैनुण्डी आप्नी दिग्गिवचु दाहिंचा बड़ुनु सर्वमलिनामु दाहिंचा बड़ुनु सर्वमलिनामु इट्टिनी महिमातु निम्पुनु इट्टिनी महिमातु निम्पुनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु आयनमहिमातु परिपोर्नमुगान निंदेनु
मर पार्ट बाड़कुंता पेज नंबर पार्ट नंबर नालु गोंदला आपे इदु मरसंकेय मुड़वंदला तम्मय इदु प्रथदांटो नालु गोंदला आपे एनिमिदी प्रभुनी प्रमाणमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु
मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचुनु दाने अंदु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचुनु दाने अंदु यंतसुंदरमु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु यंतसुंदरमु प्रभुनी ग्रोहमु नालु दीकुलनुण्डी कुचेनोगा नालु दीकुलनुण्डी कुचेनोगा एकसरीरमु प्राक्षा पंधमुचे एकसरीरमु प्राक्षा पंधमुचे वेलदी पासलनु दिनादु वेलदी पासलनु दिनादु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचुनु दाने अंदु मनमे प्रभुनी परलोक ग्रोहमु ताने वसिंचुनु दाने अंदु वत्कनु तनावर तिगममु जेसी वत्कनु तनावर तिगममु जेसी परमग्रोहमु Paramagrohamu nakchchirmdehitimi Aikyata to tiramogana matsavadi Aikyata to tiramogana matsavadi Devuni godaramogana hitimi Devuni godaramogana hitimi Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Narlani chalani varani ledhu Narlani chalani varani ledhu Danikulu daritrulaniyo ledhu Danikulu daritrulaniyo ledhu Vamarulani knanulaniyo ledhu Vamarulani knanulaniyo ledhu Jesu Prabhuve sarvamoga Jesu Prabhuve sarvamoga Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Prabhu nirrohamu nakalahamu ledhu Prabhu nirrohamu nakalahamu ledhu Isha kapata vedamu ledhu Isha kapata vedamu ledhu Shanti anandamu nija prema yundunu Shanti anandamu nija prema yundunu Hirputu nadupunu manaprabhuve Hirputu nadupunu manaprabhuve Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Prabhu nirrohamu Prabhu nirrohamu Sarayonhadu Prativani kivani panini aminchse Prativani kivani panini aminchse Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Trudavi swasamu vadinandhursi Trudavi swasamu vadinandhursi Vijyalulay aathalu sagedamu Vijayulay aathalu sagedamu Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Priyoni dinamu samipinchutonnadi Priyoni dinamu samipinchutonnadi Chepeno melkoni yundumanu Chepeno melkoni yundumanu Gorimito vetchyundedamu Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu Maname Prabhu ni paraloka grohamu Tane vasiddh sunudaniyandhu
Part sankya naal gundala 02 Shakti Galasale Emraja, Sharono Roja Maru sankya moodu vandala 02 Maru sankya naal gundala Naalafayayidu Naal gundala meedu vandala sankyantu
Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Povramunapalkinani pravachanokthulani Thakkaganomakuvatu chesitivinivu Chesitivinivu Povramunapalkinani pravachanokthulani Thakkaganomakuvatu chesitivinivu Chesitivinivu Povramunachopinani pratyakshatalani Povramunachopinani pratyakshatalani Varusaganojaripitivi ninno polina vaadu Veeravvaro ledhu Varusaganojaripitivi ninno polina vaadu Veeravvaro ledhu Veeravvaro ledhu Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Payaluparachinatti namu nanopolinaadu Balamuganoni do pratyakshagodaramuno Godaramuno Payaluparachinatti namu nanopolinaadu Balamuganoni do pratyakshagodaramuno Ni godaramuno Kattitivini dasurainarnimusara Kattitivini dasurainarnimusara Nimpitivinindaina ni prabhava mahimanu Prabhava mahimanu Nimpitivinindaina ni prabhava mahimanu Prabhava mahimanu Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Shalemu erushalemuloni Shalayamu Akkadanu ekkadanu kankariniyeri Akvatanu akvatanu cheyuvaadavi Cheyuvaadavi Akkadanu ekkadanu kankariniyeri Akvatanu akvatanu cheyuvaadavi Cheyuvaadavi Nothanatam patulano vintagathivenchii Nothanatam patulano vintagathivenchii Antakantakontilla cheyuvaadavi Kayuvaadavi Antakantakontilla cheyuvaadavi Kayuvaadavi Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Vyakthulanu kutumbamuluka machivesi Shakti Galasangavaduka machivesi Neere machivesi Vyakthulanu kutumbamululaka machivesi Shakti Galasangavaduka machivesi Neere machivesi Vintagana vadhulaku varunnavaynalu Vintagana vadhulaku varunnavaynalu Antamule tahanu mahimaraaja munaku Halleluya amen Antamule tahanu mahimaraaja munaku Halleluya amen Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim Shakti Galam, Shalemu Rajya Sharono Roja Stutiyencheda mesunim
Andar leechnelbadi Bible palu padukuntam Andar leechnelbadi
Balle balle maadu Bale bhaata Bangaro maata Baybolu maata Jesu maata Bale bhaata Bangaro maata Baybolu maata Jesu maata Mahdivitana ne divitana Parvane maata Jesu maata Mahdivitana ne divitana Parvane maata Jesu maata Bale bhaata Bangaro maata Baybolu maata Jesu maata Bale bhaata Bangaro maata Baybolu maata Jesu maata
Daya vartamana mintamu
Shall we turn to the book of Hebrews and chapter six
Hebrew Hebrews 20 patrika, aravadya any chuddam
We will read the first two verses
Aravadya mu Modeti rendu vachinalu andarang kalisichadukunam
Hebrews chapter six, verses one and two
Aravadya mu Modeti rendu vachinalu manavandaran kalipichadukunam Kaabadi Nirchi vakreelani milchi Maru manusapundutayu Devuniyandali visvasu manu bhatismanu kuchina bodayu Asthanichayapunam manu mruddanapunurudanam manu Nittimayinatiirfunu anupunadi maralaveyaka Kristinukuchina molopadeshimani Sampurnumagutukusagutamu
Shall we also read our theme verse Shall we also read our theme verse together
Manayaka mola vakyani koda chusukunam
Ephesians and chapter two
Ephesians patrika, rendu vadya mu
And verse twenty-two
Yeravay rendu vachinam
Ephesians, chapter two and verse twenty-two
Ephesians patrika, rendu vadya mu
Verse twenty-two
Yeravay rendu vachinam
All together please
Andarang kalisichadukunam Ayanalo miru koda atmamolamaga Devuniyiki nevasastalamayundutaku kattabadiyunnam
Shall we pray
Pradhana chesukunam
Loving heavenly Father
Parlokumunatandri
We do thank and praise you for gathering us together once again This afternoon in thine house
Ee madhyana kaalsamelo, me naamulo koodiraavtani ke maguchupinakrupkay vandanalu
Thank you for the time granted to us this morning
Ee udai kaalsamelo, a samayamantamaathu unnandukundanalu
We thank you Lord for enabling our dear ones here with much prayer To arrange these two days of meetings
Naina e rendu vachinala koodikilnu pradhana purakanga mari airpartchaydani ke china krupkay vandanalu
We thank you for the prayers answered
Naina ma pradhanuku mirichina jawabukay vandanalu
Thank you also for the theme that was given to us to meditate upon for these two days
Pravva miru dhyaninsedani ke rendu vachinalu koda miru makichina mola vakyani bettu vandanalu
Thank you for whatever you've granted to us in the morning two sessions
Naina udai kaalsamelo, miru matlada prati matkay vandanalu
We continue to wait and look to you for the grace we require to not only give thy word but also to receive your word
Pravva miru, miru makichina krupkay vandanalu, me vakyani mev Naina mari, mev receive chesukodani ke, mev laganapastani ke, miru chupinakrupkay vandanalu sahanchen
Thank you for the grace given to us to give thy word Thank you for the grace given to give thy word in the morning
Pravva udai kaal vakyamlo, miru makuchupinakrupkay vandanalu
Thank you for the grace given to us to hear thy word
Naina ni vakyani dhyaniche krupkay chinnandukundanalu
Now continue to grant us your grace Take away our tiredness Take away our tiredness
Naina ma kunnatvadala setantolaginsen
Bless our time
Ma samayana asuradinsen
And the meditation of your word
Ni vakyani dhyaniche krupkay
Make our time profitable and edifying
Naina e samayani maaku asuradukaranga, meelukaranga chaimanu vedukum
We ask this prayer with thanksgiving in the name of our Lord and our Savior, Lord Jesus Christ
Jesu Kristu naamulo krotaknata purakanga mekuvandanal chelistnannandri
Amen
Amen
We have been dwelling on the theme in Ephesians, chapter two and verse twenty-two
Ephesians patrika Rendu vadya mu, yeravay rendu vachinam, manamola amshimayda manu durstibedam
No brother, we have been already meditating on this theme
Manu dhyanistavunna udai kaalunchi xeminsali
And we continue to meditate on this theme
Ee sainkalam koda vakyani dhyanuchedavide vakyani
We saw that we are being built as a habitation of God
Devuniyaka mari nevasamaga manu kattabarchunam
That has been the Lord's great desire and longing for us
Devuniyaka aashi koda adhe manapattla
From the beginning we see that the Lord has a desire to dwell with man and also to
तू डेल विथ मैन और अलसो तू हैव फेलोशिप विथ मैन मोदी निगुट्टुकोडा देवुनियका मरी उद्देश्यमु मानुमुनु तो निवसिंचालनी मानुमु तो सहवासम चेल दिस इस डी रीजन व्हाइ डी लॉर्ड क्रिएटेड मैन इन डी गार्डन ऑफ ईडन अंदके देवुडाइन अट्वंटी योहोवा आयोका येदेनु वनुलो मानुमुनु सृजिंचाड विल गिव इस ओन इमेज तू मैन मानुमुनिकी तन स्वरूपान निचाड विल नॉट गिव एनी अदर इमेज तू मैन मानुमुनिकी मरोकरूपान निवलेदु कानी क्योंकि विल गिवन एनी अदर इमेज मैन वुड अफेल्ट इन्फीरियर तू कम तू गॉड सो देवुनी संदिदिक रावटानिके मरी देवुनी संदिदिक रावटानिके लांटी नियुनता बावुले नट्वर्टी स्वभाव नी देवुड मनु किचाड नो ब्रदर विल गिवन एनी अदर इमेज मैन वुड अफेल्ट इट इन्फीरियर देवुडु वकवेला मरोका रूपानिकान किचुंटे देवुनी संदिदिक रावटानिके नियुनता बावुले वोडे सो डेवस व्हाइ डी लॉर्ड गिव इस ओन इमेज तू मैन अंदके देवुडु तन स्वरूपान निचाड बट मैन लॉस दिस पर्पस ऑफ गॉड कानी देवुडु मनुडु देवुनियका उद्देश्य निचित्त पिकैय विल सी इन डी गार्डन ऑफ ईडन होव विल डिजर्बेड गॉड मनु येदेनु वनुलो चोस्ताम देवुड अलागु वातो वहरिस्तो चाड विल सी होव मैन डिजर्बेड गॉड इन डी गार्डन ऑफ ईडन अह यलागु मानुमुनी अकडा देवुडु मरी कापाट तो चाड चोस्तामुन नो ब्रदर नॉट गेटिंग माय कॉर्न होव मैन डिजर्बेड गॉड अविदेव तो चुपिचाड सो देवुनिकी मानुड अलांटी अविदेव तो चुपिस्तो चाडो मनु चोस्ताम और बिकॉज़ ऑफ डेट मैन लॉस डी प्रेजेंस ऑफ गॉड अंदु वालला देवुनी संदिदिक मानुड कोल्पयाड और ये तू बी ड्रिवन अवे फ्रॉम डी गार्डन ऑफ ईडन गा येदेनु वनुनुची मरी त्रोसिवे बट्टाड और इट अप्परियर आज इफ गॉड कुड नॉट बी विथ मैन और डेल विथ मैन अह अंदु वालना देवुडु मानुमुन्तो उन्डलेपडु लेका मानुमुन्तो कल्पी निवासम चेल गॉड कुड नॉट डेल विथ मैन मैन कुड नॉट डेल विथ गॉड देवुडु मानुमुन्तो निवसिंचलेडु मानुडु कोडा देवुन्तो निवसिंचलेन अट्वंटी सो सैटन थॉट विल डेस्ट्रॉयड डी प्लान और पर्पस ऑफ गॉड और विल रिजॉइसिंग सो देवुनियका प्रणालिकु अतनु मरी अह माटे तेरसकांचिन वाडिगा चोस्तामुन मनु इकड़ा सैटन विल अलसो रिजॉइसिंग अंदु वालना सातानु कोडा संतोषिंचे वाडिगुन्न बट नोबड़ी कैन डेस्ट्रॉय और डिफीट डी प्लान और पर्पस ऑफ गॉड देवुनियका प्रणालिकु वोडिंस्टंगानी दानिनी अमरी विभेदिंस्टंगानी अवर वालकाद अह डेवस व्हाइ विल सी अगेन आज विल मूव ऑन इन डी बुक ऑफ जेनसेस अलागे मनु आयोका अधिकानोलो चूस्ते आज विल कम तू चैप्टर 12 पनिड़ा जाय चूस्ते विल सी होव गॉड हैव चोजन वन मैन एब्रहान मरी अब्रहामरे अट्वंटी व्यक्तिनी देवुड अलायर पाचुकुन्नाड चोस्ता और थ्रू डी वन मैन विल ब्रॉट अवार्ड डी नेशन ऑफ इसरायल अह वक्कम वक्कम व्यक्तिद्वारा देवुडु इसरायलु जनांगानी तीस्कुन्न चाड और एवं तो विल बीन बॉन्डेज और स्लेवरी इन डी लैंड ऑफ ईजिट फॉर 40 डेज मरी 430 डेज 423 समंत्रालु वाडी आयुगत्तलो बानिसलगा उन्नपड़कनी लॉर्ड डिलीवर्ड और ब्रॉट डम आउट वारिनी देवुड विडिपिंची तीस्कुन्न चाड और आफ्टर ब्रिंग आफ्टर ब्रिंगिंग डम आउट ऑफ ईजिट आयुगत्तलुनुची तीस्कुन्न चेन्टर वात आज विल रीड इन एक्सरस चैप्टर 25 मरी निर्गमा कार्म 22 जम प्रकारमु और वर्स 8 22 वचिन प्रकार विल सी डी लॉर्ड दिस इस व्हाट डी लॉर्ड टोल मोजेस अह इकरमा चोस्ताम मोजेस तो देवुड चेप्पीन माटन लेट डम बिल्ट मी डी सेंचुरी डेट मी डेल अमाउंट्स डम अह नाकोरकु वक्कन निवासस्थलमु वाड निर्मिन्चाली नैन अकन निवासम चेस्टनी देवुड चेप्पड डेवस डिजायर और प्लान ऑफ गॉड अदे देवुनियका आशा देवुनियका प्रणालिक नोबड़ी कैन चेंज दिस प्लान ऑफ गॉड देवुडु कोडा ई देवुनी प्रणालिकल मार्चलेर और डेवस होव गॉड विन तू डेल अमाउंट्स डी चिल्ड्रन ऑफ इसरायल एवं तो विल बीन ट्रेवलिंग इन डी बिल्डनेस वारु अरंडिमलो प्रयाणिस्तुन्ना पड़कनी देवुनियका संदिदिवारु तो चेन और विल कंटिन्यू तू डेल अमाउंट्स डम वारी मज्जन निवसिंचाड देवु और लेटर ऑन आज विल सी डी टैबर्नकल गिव प्लेस फॉर डी टेंपल विथ सॉलोमन बिल्ट अलागे आयोका प्रत्यक्ष गुडारानी तीस्केचिन तरवात असोलोम मानु आयनकोरकु वक्कन निवासनी कट्टिंचाड और गॉड विन तू डेल इन डी टेंपल अलसो देवुडु आयोका देवालायमलो कोडा उन्नटानिकी वचाड बट अगेन डी चिल्ड्रन ऑफ इसरायल विन तू डिजर्बेंग डी लॉर्ड आयना पड़कनी इसरायलु जनांगु देवुनिका अविदेव तो चुपितुने वचाड विल नॉट अबल तू फुल्फिल इस कमांडमेंट आयोका आज्ञन वार नरवर्चले पयाड विल लुकिंग तू डी अदर नेशन वारु यथरयका जनांगु वायप चोटम मोलेस विल अलसो बिकेम आइडोलेटर वारु कोडा विग्रहारादुगलायाड और डेवर फॉर डी लॉर्ड अलाउ डी एनिमी तू कम और कान्कर डम अंदु वाले शत्रु वार नची ओडिंची जयंची तीस्कुन्न वाल्टानिके देवुड अनुमतिंचाड विल नॉट ओनली कान्कर डम विल रीड इन डी सेकंड बुक ऑफ क्रॉनिकल्स और चैप्टर 36 रिंडवा दिनवरुत्थान्तलो मरे मुप्पे आरो वचन चूसिन अपुड विल डेस्ट्रॉयड और बर्न डी टेंपल ऑफ गॉड आयोका मरी देवालायनी तगलबेटी नाशन चेस्नट्टु चोस्ताम सो डी डेलिंग प्लेस ऑफ गॉड इट्सेल विल डेस्ट्रॉयड देवुनी निवासस्थलमे नाशन चेबड़ि विल सी विल सी डी गॉड्स लॉर्ड्स पर्पस ऑन वंस साइड वक्का प्रक्का देवुनियका प्रणालितन चोस्ताम ऑन डी अदर साइड विल सी डी प्लान और स्ट्रेटजी ऑफ सैटन मरोप्रक्का सातानु वक्का पन्नागालु तंत्रान चोस्ताम सो डेट डेव विल डी ग्रेट डेव ऑफ रिजॉइसिंग फॉर सैटन सो आरोज नुचिकोडा मरी सातानु वक्का संत्रुक्तिकोरकु जरुगुतुन्नाट चोस्ताम डेव विल डी ग्रेट डेव ऑफ रिजॉइसिंग जॉय फॉर सैटन अह आदिनमु मरी सातानुकु वक्का संतोषकरमयन दिनमगा मुगिन मेबी सैटन वुड अफेल्ट एवं चैलेंज डी लॉर्ड आस्ट डी लॉर्ड वकवेला देवुनी सातानु सवाल चेसुन्न विल डिस डेट सवाल एंट आसवाल प्रभाव वेयर इस डी डेलिंग प्लेस ना देवा इपुर नीयका निवासस्थलम एकड़ोंदी वेयर आर यू गोइंग तू डेल ना इपुर एकड़ा निवसिंच बोतावन सो डेवस व्हाइ डेवस थॉट विल डेल 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 अंदके सातानुनुकुन्नी इकाईपोइंनी देवुनी प्रणालिकुन्नी नु पॉर्चेसन अनुकुन बट डेवस कैन नेवर नेवर हैपन आइते अदि जरगले क्योंकि डी लॉर्ड इस सॉवरेन एंड कंटे देवुडु सरूपमुडु डी लॉर्ड इस अह फुल ऑफ अथॉरिटी और पावर आयनकु अदकारमु शक्ति उन्नवाड विल गॉड ऑफ विल गॉड ऑफ ऑल पॉजिबिलिटीज आयन समस्तमुनु चाइकलिगन देवुडु और डेवर फॉर विल नॉट लीव डी टेंपल इन डेट वे काबटी आयना आयोका देवालायनी आविदंगा वधिल वेडले विल बिल्ट डी टेंपल अगेन मरला तिरिगी जन नौरु देवालाय निर्मिन्चाड और विल साउद ग्लोरियस डेज आफ्टर डेट अला तरवात महिमकरमयन दिनालु तरवात चुडल बट अगेन डी टेंपल विल डेस्ट्रॉयड मरला आयोका देवालाय यु पॉर्चेबड अगेन डी चिल्ड्रन ऑफ इसरायल विल ट्राइंग तू बिल्ड इट मरला इसरायलु कट्टतानिकु उलुकुन अगेन विल बी डेस्ट्रॉयड मल्लियाव अदि नाशन चेबड़ि बट आज विल मूव इन तू डेज ऑफ डी न्यू टेस्टमेंट प्रत्निबंधनु कालमुनुकु प्रवेशिंचे टपड़क डी लॉर्ड इस बिल्डिंग डी टोटली डी न्यू डेलिंग प्लेस फॉर इम्सेल देवुडु वक्कन नोथनमायन अट्वंटी निवासस्थलानी निर्मिन्चिन विल नॉट बी बिल्ट विथ स्टोन्स और ब्रिक और मोटर अदि केवलमु रालतोटी लेकुंटे सीमेंट इट्टुकुल तो निर्मिन्चिंद काद विल इस अस्पिरिचुअल हाउस अदि आत्मीमायन अट्वंटी निवास डेवस व्हाइ पीटर कॉल्स इट इन फर्स्ट पीटर चैप्टर तू और वर्स 5 विल इस अस्पिरिचुअल हाउस
So he is the living stone. We were dead stones. But the Lord brought his life into us. And because of that, as we read in verse five, through that living stone, we have become lively stones. So we are being built as a spiritual house. We are being built as the habitation of God. And we saw there are some principles by which we are being built as the habitation of God. We saw the first principle this morning. That for every building, there has to be a chief corner stone. And the Lord Jesus Christ is that chief corner stone. Why and how did he become our chief corner stone? We saw five reasons for that. Do you remember that? First of all, he is our perfect stone. Perfect stone. Perfect, perfect. Shodimpa badina rai. Then secondly, we saw that he is our precious stone. And then thirdly, what did you see? What did you see? Ah, he is our powerful or strong stone. And then fourthly, we saw, he also became a rejected stone for our sake. And then fifthly, we saw, that he also became a smitten stone. Smitten, smitten. So that is how he became our chief corner stone. Then we saw the second principle for the habitation of God. It is actually a six-fold principle. We saw that in Hebrews chapter six, verses one and two. We saw the first two things. We saw that all these six things, they are coming in three pairs. We saw the first pair this morning. First of all, repentance from dead words. And then secondly, faith toward God. In the past, we were having these dead works in us. We also had works of darkness. We were also having works of wickedness. And also we saw, we had unfruitful words. So this was our past. And the Lord, because he saved us, these five-fold works have been removed. And now the Lord has brought in good works in us. And we saw how those good works are. How effective those works are. How fruitful they are. Then afterward, we saw about faith. Faith is the second aspect in the foundation for the habitation of God. Faith toward God. Not faith toward any man. Not faith toward any organization. Not faith in money. But faith toward God himself. And we saw how we get this faith. First of all, we have to look at the Lord Jesus Christ. Then secondly, we turn to the scriptures. It is through the word of God, our faith becomes strong and increasing. Now we come to the third aspect. Kindly listen to this very carefully. Because it's a very, very important aspect in our Christian life. Three and four, they both come together. They are very, very necessary. Many are neglecting this. Many are neglecting this. So that is why we have to be very careful about these things. What is the third thing? The doctrine of baptisms. Kindly read the right things. Read that verse, verse two. See, it is not coming in the singular there. We have to note all these things very carefully. See, everything, even a full stop or comma, it has been punctuated by the help of the Holy Spirit of God. If you don't read carefully the word of God, if you don't hear the word of God carefully, if I don't speak the word of God also carefully, if it is not translated also properly, we will be missing very important spiritual truths in our lives. That is what is happening these days. This is what is happening among many preachers these days. That's why you have to be careful. That's why you have to pray for the preachers also. What should be your prayer? Lord, let the preacher, the messenger, give the pure, true word of God. So here, the word baptism is used in the plural. What is the meaning of that? Nowadays, there are much, there is much wrong doctrine that is spreading everywhere. Many wrong doctrines are being preached. One of them is this. What they say is, Bible itself says baptisms in the plural. So there is child baptism and also adult baptism. The Bible does not say that. In the word of God, there is no place for child baptism. It is totally a wrong doctrine. It is not according to the Lord. Then why is it all saying baptisms in the plural? First of all, there is no child baptism here. See Acts of the Apostles. Acts of the Apostles. Apostle Karim. Chapter eight. Here we read how Philip was preaching and then baptizing the people. Philip was preaching and baptizing. Brother, he is not preaching. He is preaching the gospel and then he was also baptizing. Shall we all read very carefully verse twelve? Acts, chapter eight and verse twelve. All together please. But when they believed Philip, Did you read that verse carefully? Philip was preaching about the kingdom of God. In other words, he was giving the gospel. In other words, he was giving the gospel. And they responded to that gospel. They accepted the Lord. Like as we read in Acts, chapter two, they confessed all their sins. They confessed their sins. And then immediately, they were taking baptism. Now who are taking baptism? Very clearly, it is mentioned here. Who are taking baptism? Brother, you are not using the right one. Who are taking baptism here? These things are very important. Are children there? No. If you see in John's Gospel, chapter six. We saw this morning also. Not only men and women, they were there. How many of them were there? We say five thousand. But some Bible scholars say they could have been up to ten thousand, it seems. Why? Because five thousand men were there. That means at least three thousand women also must be there. And two thousand children also could be there. So ten thousand people were there. Why do I say children were there? That because that boy, little boy, brought five loaves and two fishes. He is a small boy. So he also came there. We saw this morning, he also heard the word of God. And that is why he received that faith. He received faith. He got that faith. With that faith, he gave away five loaves and two fishes. So when Philip was preaching here, surely children will also be there. But what are the children doing? Are they also coming in the line for baptism? No. Only men and women, they were baptized. Why men and women can be baptized? Later on, we will come to that. So here baptism means, what is the meaning of the plural word? It is not children. It is not child baptism. Then what is this baptism? We all see only one baptism where they all go into the water and come out of the water. It is a public baptism. But before this public baptism, there is another baptism that takes place in our lives. It is not seen by anybody. And it is not known to us also. What is a baptism? See 1 Corinthians. And chapter twelve. And note these verses, they are very important. Kindly note these verses, they are very important. Because if somebody comes and asks you, they will definitely ask you, baptism is, why it is in plural there? When you are trying to force wrong doctrines among the believers today. If you are not careful, if you do not know the word of God, Paul says in the same book of Ephesians, chapter four, that will be tossed to and fro by every wind of doctrine. How? By wrong doctrine. So that's why we must be, must know the scriptures. So note down this verse very carefully. Now shall we read 1 Corinthians, chapter twelve and verse thirteen. All together, shall we read? Kindly read this verse carefully. For by one spirit, we are baptized into one body, whether we be Jews or Gentiles, and have been all made to drink to one. Ah, see, this is the first baptism. When does this take place? How does it take place? The day you were born again. The time when you confessed all your sins. As soon as you are washed by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. Immediately, this baptism has taken place. What is a baptism? The Holy Spirit of God has taken you and I and baptized us into the body of Christ. That is the first baptism. It is a private baptism. Not a particular, it is a secret baptism. Nobody knows that. I also did not know that. I remember when it has happened. Many years ago, many years ago, when I was still a young man, when I confessed all my sins, I received this first baptism. This is a secret baptism. Now secondly, it is what is called as a public baptism. And everybody sees that. You also know that. And what is this baptism? Why this baptism? In this baptism, you and I are identified with the Lord Jesus Christ. Ah, what is that? We are identified with the Lord Jesus Christ in a three-fold manner. We are identified with his death. Secondly, we are identified in his burial. And thirdly, we are identified in his resurrection. In other words, I say, when I go for baptism, this is what I declare. This is what I declare. I am dead with Christ. I am buried with Christ. I am risen with Christ. When can a man be buried? Can you bury me now? If you do that, you will go to jail. But after the Lord calls me and takes me home, till then, it is not possible. So the death must take place. See the wonderful thing here. We were dead in our sins. But after we are born again, see the difference here. We are dead to sins. We were dead in sins. Now what is happening? What a wonderful thing is today. That is the power the Lord has given to us. So those who take baptism, they must be dead to all the sins. Otherwise, what is happening? You are still sinful. But you are buried. What will happen? What will happen? Try to push out, come up. That is the reason why many are there, even in the assemblies, with the old nature of sin, still being spiritual. Old desires have not gone. Old friendship has not gone. Old walk has not gone. They are, they are still there. And that is why even those people who take baptism, they are not profitable and useful in the church. In their own lives, they are leading a defeated life. They bring much loss and damage in the work of God. So this is very important. Only those who are dead to their sins completely can be baptized. We will come to that later on in a much better way. So there are two baptisms. First of all, we are baptized into the body of Christ. Secondly, we are baptized to be identified with the Lord Jesus Christ. Now there comes a question. What is that question? Why should we be baptized at all? Then Marvansu Pundian Gada. Is that enough? I can go to heaven. No, we have to know and learn what the word of God says. Why baptism is important? First of all, it is a command that you and I must obey. We read that in Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-eight. Verse nineteen. It is the command the Lord gave to his disciples. What is that agna? Go into all the world, make disciples, and then baptize them in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. So it is a command, last and important command the Lord gave to his disciples. What do you do with a command? A command must be obeyed. You cannot disobey a command. You cannot disobey a command. In the year nineteen sixty-nine, this Telangana agitation started. At that time, I was preparing myself to write the tenth class exam, first tenth class. We lost one year. Because of the Telangana agitation. And that situation became uncontrollable. And therefore, the military was called in. Governor's rule was imposed. Governor's rule. Ah, so then they gave a command. Nobody should come out for five days. And then they gave this order, shoot at sight. Those days, no television. So in the, in the radio, it was coming again and again. The newspaper, very large printed game. All, all were inside with great fear. Military was walking on the roads, military people. At that time, one small kid went out of the house and walking. And their parents did not realize that. Parents did not realize that. They did not notice that. And at that time, there was a military soldier there. What did you do? He pulled the gun and shot the child. The child died. There was a big commotion. There was a big commotion. And they all went to the governor. And the governor called the commandant, military commandant. What has happened? One small child, they killed. And the soldier were getting scared, he was getting scared. The soldier who killed, he got scared. And the commander, commander said, he asked the soldier, he asked the soldier, yes sir, I killed him. Then the commander told the governor, you only signed that order. What is that order? Shoot at sight. Even if a dog comes, we will shoot. If an angel comes also, we will shoot. So that is the command. And that man obeyed the command. Therefore, they protected that soldier, that's all. Why? He obeyed the command. He did not say, chinnavaa, abbae gada, how can I shoot him? He just obeyed the order. He obeyed the command that was given to him. In the same way, this is a command given not by any commandant, but by our great commander, our Lord. What is that agna? You must be baptized. We must also baptize those who are born again. So you cannot disobey this command. This is the first reason why we must take baptism. Then secondly, we read in Luke's Gospel, chapter seven. Luke's Gospel, chapter seven. Verse thirteen. But the Pharisees and lawyers rejected the counsel of God against themselves, being not baptized of him. Ah, what is that last word? What is that word? That is what we should not do. So what we must do? We must accept the counsel of God. What is that? It says counsel of God. Ah, you cannot reject the counsel of God. The scribes and others, they rejected the counsel of God. But you and I cannot reject this counsel of God. First of all, we should obey the command. Secondly, we must also fulfill the counsel of God. And then thirdly, we see in the word of God, that this taking baptism means fulfilling the righteousness of God. We see that in Matthew's Gospel. And chapter three. Matthew's Gospel, chapter three. Ah, samayum na, yo, yo haanu cheta baptism pundutaku, yesu galilei nudi yodda nu dakkarununa, atani yodduku vachenu. Ani, ayana nu, niwarimpa juchenu gani, yesu, ippatti kaani mu, niitiya vatu yilagun nerevecu da, manuku tagiunu dani, atani kuvutaramichenu ganku, atani alagu kaani chenu. Why did the Lord take baptism? To fulfill God's righteousness. What is the meaning of that? If you don't take baptism, you and I are dependent upon your own righteousness. In other words, you are rejecting God's righteousness. So baptism is very important. You will fulfill the righteousness of God. Then fourthly and finally, the Lord Jesus himself took baptism. The Lord Jesus himself took baptism. Our Lord and Master himself took baptism. Who are you and I not to take baptism? If you are not taking baptism, you are a disobedient child of God. You are not able to please the Lord. Then therefore, you cannot receive the blessings in your life. So these are the reasons why we had to take baptism. So we have seen what baptism is. Secondly, we have seen why we should take baptism. Secondly, we have seen why we should take baptism. Now, we come to another third important question. What is that? Who should take baptism? Should all non-Christians take baptism? So that they also can become Christians? Should we take baptism before marriage? That's what happens in many assemblies. Some people, they come for baptism. They fill up the forms. They know how to answer the God's servant and elders. They know how to answer them. They have ready verses also. They have ready verses also. They'll give those verses. That is not real baptism. What is baptism? After some time. Those people who took baptism, they are coming for marriage. It is a baptism marriage, marriage for the sake of marriage. In some places. If you want to get admission in good colleges. In America and other places. They need a baptism certificate. So, for that sake, some are coming and taking baptism these days. That is not why you have to take baptism. Who should take baptism? Those who are born again. Those who are repented of their sins. In Hebrews, chapter six, we read. What is coming before baptism? Repentance is coming. After repentance, faith. And after faith, comes baptism. That is a spiritual order. We can understand it better when we turn to Acts, chapter two. And here, we know how Peter was preaching on the day of Pentecost. And he was giving a gospel to them. Now, what was the response of that gospel? Verse thirty-seven. Shall we all read this verse carefully? "He went to the church and prayed to the apostles. He prayed to the apostles, and they prayed to him. They prayed to him, and he prayed to the apostles." I think we are all getting tired. Let the tiredness go away, let us all read together again. Let us read loudly also. "They prayed to the apostles, and they prayed to them. They prayed to them, and they prayed to the apostles." What is that word? "Nochukoni." They were pricked in their hearts. "Why? How were they pricked?" Because Peter was preaching the gospel to them. And that gospel pricked their heart. And because of that, they came to Peter and other apostles. What should we do now? Now, see what is Peter's answer. Again, all together, carefully, loudly, shall we read? "He went to the church, and prayed to the apostles. He went to the church, and prayed to them. Yes, he preached to them, and baptized them." Have you seen the order here? What is Peter saying? He is not saying, "Be baptized and repent of your sins." What is he saying? Repent and be baptized. That is the divine order. That is the order according to the word of God. But what is happening these days? Many, without repentance, they are taking baptism. There is no new life in them. They are not leading an overcoming life. They are not leading an overcoming life. They are leading a defeated life. Why? What is the reason? No repentance. No change of heart. And they have taken baptism. They are happy. Parents are happy. Parents are happy. Parents, brother. The church also, people are happy. Love feast, they are giving. Sweets, they are giving. Sweets also, they are giving. After few months. That boy is leading the same life. Baptism without repentance. So, repentance is very important before baptism. There is his own brother in our assembly. He was very carefully. And he was very spiritual. He will worship. He will pray. Come for all the meetings. And after some time. He was distributing the Lord's table also. And then, we had baptisms. So, we gave the word for baptism. At that time, we emphasized very much on these words. And the very next day, as we were all praying together as elders. He came into our room. He said, "I just want to speak to you for two minutes." He said, "Come on, brother, come on, what do you want?" You know what he said? "I will do baptism." We were all shocked. He is praying. Worshipping. Distributing the Lord's table. Coming for Bhairanga Swarth also. He says, "He wants to take baptism." So, we asked him. "Brother, have you not taken baptism?" You know what he said? "I will do baptism." "I will do baptism." "Only now, I am born again." "Only three years ago, I accepted the Lord." "So, that baptism, I do not consider as baptism." That is why I have been leading a defeated spiritual life. I want to confess it to the church also. We said, "Yes, brother, you better do that." Because it will be useful for the church. People will be spoken also by that. So, before the baptism. He stood up. Gave a testimony. He said, "You all, please forgive me." "I was deceiving you all." "I was not born again." "But I have taken baptism." "Even after being born again." "I was not bothered about this baptism." "The Lord has spoken to me now." "The Lord has convinced me now." "And therefore, I want to take baptism." That brought joy for all of us. And it brought fear also in the lives of some people. Why fear? Because they also taken baptism without repentance. "We have to take all these things very seriously." And if the elders and responsible brothers, they take it seriously, don't get angry with them. "If the elders are insisting on these principles, please don't get angry with them, with the elders." "If the elders are insisting on these principles, please don't get angry with them, with the elders." "If the elders are insisting on these principles, please don't get angry with them, with the elders." "Now, you got it? Don't get angry with them." "You know why? The name of the Lord, I am saying. More than you and I, they have to stand before God and give an account to God." "They have to give a double account to the Lord." "That's why we have to be careful about these things really well aware." "In the days gone by, thirty, forty years ago, Brother Baxing used to personally interview every brother, every sister who would take baptism." "Many were not allowed to take baptism also." "That is why that spiritual life was different those days." "They were shining for the Lord." "They were witnesses for the Lord." "How many overcomers are there in our assemblies today?" "How many are leading victorious life these days?" "One of the reason for that is baptism is not properly taken." "So, you have to do baptism." "Why we are sharing this is..." "So that you know that." "And you will pass it on to the next generation." "Otherwise, everybody will take baptism." "All will take baptism." "All will be leading defeated lives." "That is not the Lord's intention." "So, those who take baptism must repent of their sins." "What the word of God says?" Matthew's Gospel. Luke's Gospel. Chapter three. Here, we read about John preaching about the kingdom of God and repentance and baptism. "Yohannes preached to the Lord, and he went to the church." And as he was preaching. "Many came forward to take baptism." "And see what he is telling them." Verse six. John, Matthew, chapter three and verse six. "And were baptized of him in Jordan." "Here also." "And now, see what he is telling them in verse eight." "Bring forth therefore fruits, meat for repentance." Maybe, I think it is in seventh verse. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Seventh verse. "See what John is telling them." "What is the meaning of that?" "That means there must be an evidence of salvation." "The Lord Jesus said, 'You will know them by their fruit.'" "You will know them by their fruit." "So, if you go to a mango tree." "How do you say it is a mango tree?" "When you look the mangoes there." "Or, 'Aakal' untadi." "That shows it is a mango tree." "The same way, there must be an evidence of repentance and salvation in my life." "So, not only repentance is important." "That's why it is better you baptize particular young people, not immediately after they are born again." "So, you have to do baptism." "Why?" "Because we must watch for fruit, meat for repentance." "A person may be born again. But he is still speaking lies." "He is still getting angry." "He has not left his old habits." "So, you cannot give baptism to such a person." "So, we must be careful about this evidence of repentance." "Also, see Acts of the Apostles." Chapter twenty-six. Acts of the Apostles, chapter twenty-six. And verse twenty. Says last part, "That they should repent and turn to God and do..." "Not only mangoes." "They must also have works of repentance." "The old works must go away." "Because as Paul said." "If any man be in Jesus Christ." "What is the sign of that?" "All things are passed away." "What did Paul say?" "Listen very carefully." "Behold, all things have become new." "It is samastamo, they must become new." "Not even ninety-nine percent." "Only then, you can take baptism." "Are we applying all these principles?" "I had a Sunday school teacher." "When I wanted to take baptism." "We used to inform our Sunday school teachers." "I went and told my Sunday school teacher." "So, in the year nineteen seventy-one, I took baptism." "So, when I went for baptism." "I went in the year nineteen seventy itself." "I went and told him." "I went and told my Sunday school teacher." "I want to take baptism." "Then, you know what he told me?" "It is good for you to take baptism." "But he said, 'Sam, you are not ready for baptism,' he said." "You are not ready for baptism." "He is telling me." "I was surprised." "I told him." "I am born again." "I was born again on so-and-so day." "I was born again through this verse." "He said, 'I know all that.'" "But you are not having fruit or work, meat for repentance in your life." "As a young man, I was very upset." "I asked him, 'Why? Why do you say that?' "See how angry you are speaking." "I noticed you the other day also." "You were very angry with that brother." "You are shouting on Brother Taposh." "I was there that day." "I heard those words." "I saw your reaction." "You cannot take baptism." "Ask the Lord to take away this anger." "You must become a new creature in the Lord." "Then, only you can take in baptism." "I was very hurt." "I was very angry also." "But the Lord spoke to me." "I shared it with my mother." "She said, 'What he said is hundred percent right.'" "Yes, still, your anger has not gone." "Ask the Lord to take away this anger." "Teach him, and tell him." "And after some time." "He himself came to me, my Sunday school teacher." "He said, 'Sam, give your name for baptism.'" "I did not get angry." Ah, appudannadu, Sam, nee perivu bhaptisanikannan.
I said, why uncle?
Endukka uncle.
Appudarojo oddanaru.
Arojo oddanaru, ipudu, ivan.
Iputu sariyantunaru.
Ipudu sariyantunaru.
I, I was not, I did not get angry.
Neen koappadledu.
Very politely I asked him.
Neenu, maavilgane savmigana nadugutna.
You know what my Sunday school teacher said?
Na, Sunday school teacher enjepadthelsa.
Those of us who are Sunday school teachers.
Me, Sunday school teachersu.
Ah, we have to, we have to practice these things in our lives. We have to practice these things in our lives as Sunday school teachers.
Ah, Sunday school teachersu, nee jeetulivipartinsali chepa.
You know what he told me?
Ah, neen jepadthelsa.
After I spoke to you that day.
Ah, neetomaatladinappudu.
Aroju matlaadunatharavata.
Taravata.
I have been praying for you every day.
Ni kosu, neem prathidinam pradhistavunna.
I was telling the Lord, Lord changed Sam.
Ah, prabha, Samru marchan, neem prabuthoch.
Take away the anger from him.
Athalunna koappantoligintman.
Every day I was praying for you.
Prathidinavunne korak pradhinchanu.
And the other day I observed.
Ah, marukdinanu, neenu benparishili.
The other brother was talking angrily with you.
Ni to vekti koappunga matlaartanadu.
But you just kept quiet.
Nu chala savmigana unna.
The Lord has removed the anger.
Kabatthi ni lo nunchi devuda koappantoligintchu.
So marumanseppadina falamu, I could see in your life.
Aipudu neen ni lo marumanseppadina falanichuoda kaligana.
Now you can take baptism.
Kabatthi pundu bhaptisandis thisco.
You need to be such Sunday school teachers.
Manika Atlanta Sunday school teachers kavala.
Atlanta Sunday school teachersga manamundala. Not only to condemn the children.
Pillalani condensatame kadu.
Not only get angry with the children.
Varu meeda koappiginchukodame kadu.
Teach the word of God.
Devaniwakken varikbo.
Teach, teach the truth to them.
Sachyani variki boedincharu.
Be patient toward them.
Varu patla sahanampattinsalu.
Above all, pray for them.
Varu korak pradhinchalani tukant.
That is how you will help your Sunday school.
Ah, vidhanga, nee Sunday school pillalakunu sahayenchastavu.
Otherwise.
Ah, maravidhanga.
What our ministry, we may do in the midst of our children.
Papa, pillalamaadje mananchesedi, parichari aina paddikini.
We will not be bringing them to the Lord, but we will be sending them away from the Lord.
Ah, adi manu prabhu dagirikachadigadu, prabhu nunchu dorapachadigadu.
So these two things are very important.
Ee rendi vishal chalpram.
Repentance.
Pachataapum.
Then secondly.
Rendavdiga.
Fruit meet for repentance.
Ah, pach, pach, ah, marumanseppadina falamu.
And then secondly, works meet for repentance.
Ayoka marumanseppadina krielu.
And then finally.
Chivarga.
The blessings are baptism.
Ah, bhaptismamulu unna tundu, ayoka ah divan.
We saw what baptism is.
Bhaptisantentachusannu.
Secondly, we saw why we should take baptism.
Manu endukubhaptisandis kalischusannu.
Thirdly, we saw who can take baptism.
Yavrabhaptisandis kalischusannu.
And now finally.
Chivarga.
What do we receive after baptism?
Bhaptisum taravata manu, eeve pundutamochodu.
There is a three-fold blessing of baptism.
Ah, moodantala ashirvada, nee bhaptisum taravatmanu pundut.
Matthew's Gospel.
Mathesuvartha.
Chapter three.
Mudavachay.
And verses sixteen and seventeen.
Padaharu, padihedu vachina.
All together shall we read.
Mathesuvartha mudavachaymu.
Padaharu, padihedu.
Padaharu, padihedu vachina, andra kalishanu.
All together please.
Andra kalishipadigachodha, yesu bhaptisum kudireventane, neelalorunne devodinakachadu. Idhuva akasham tirupadu, devani atma powerumalidigii. Tanamidigavachadu chuchinu, mari, idhigoiyeene, na prikumalu, neen andu, neen anandichu. This is my beloved Sam. Vokasamnamu akashamunidivachinu.
Three things are happening here.
Ikka mood sangatul jarigini.
After the Lord came out from the waters of baptism.
Ayoka neelalorunchi bhaptisandis kandipravuvar baidkachintaravata.
See what is the first thing happening?
Madhiti gayenjarigindi.
The heavens were open.
Ah, ah, mari, paralokam teruvaduntu.
This is what will happen when you, when you obey in the waters of baptism.
Kabatthi ayoka neatibhaptismanikni, lobaadinappudu, jarigaysangatani.
Heavens will be open.
Paralokam teruvadunti.
What is the meaning of that?
Dan ardhaventu?
Heavenly things will be open to you.
Paraloka sammanamaynavishalani koraku, mari teruvadai.
Heavenly mysteries will be open to you.
Paraloka marmalu nikutera.
What you have not been able to understand, you will understand after baptism.
Ee layte, nee vaardancheskolayapoye, oh, bhaptisum taravata, ardhavatunni.
I have been born to a God servant.
Neenu.
I have been born to a God servant.
Ah, neenu vaka devani savakadagunna.
My parents were serving the Lord.
Ma talidandru devansevistavunna.
My father started serving the Lord from the year nineteen forty.
Ah, bondhamidondra Nalafai nunchi, Baxingaru kalksi, ma, ma, poorikulonakka, ma, taatmutatul, aradistavacha.
So we were having the regular family prayers at home.
Meu, mari, ah, ah, continuouska, kutumpradhal kaliguntamu.
We were forced to read the word of God every day.
Prathidinammoora devanwakken sadavala, nee chappadva.
Then after I accepted the Lord as my savior.
Yesu kristunene swarakshukun ganggukeenchutaravata.
I was reading the word of God.
Neen wakken sadavunna.
But many things I could not understand.
Neen chala vishal ardhancheskolay.
But one thing I noticed.
Aitha vahadi gamanichanu.
After baptism.
Bhaptismamai intaravata.
Without the help of any books.
Ye, ye vidhamaena sahayam lekonda.
I want to tell you, I am a very poor reader of books.
Neenu postakalu sadavatunlo chala venkubadinava.
Ah, venkubadinavu, nakku.
Asal ledu, aravatledu.
If I take a book and read.
Vooka vela postukonidhi sadite.
My children will start laughing at me.
Ah, ma pillalna vibe chisnaveva.
Endukku?
Endukku?
Within ten minutes, I'll go to sleep.
Ah, padiningshalo bookuzavata, nedrabavata.
I'll be sleeping.
Nedrabavata.
The book will be in my hand.
Chethlo postukontadi.
I'll be sleeping.
Nedrabavata.
But if you take the Bible there.
Bible thiskuntai.
Whole night also I have read the Bible.
Raathramtasaivava.
Sleepleledu.
Nedreledu.
Sleep will go away.
Nedre veldipoyindi.
Ah, but after baptism.
Aitha bhaptisandis thiskuntaravata.
You know what I experienced?
Neen anubhichanthelsa.
What I could understand without the help of anybody, without the help of the books, I was able to understand.
Ah, ipudu, yavrisahaayam lekonda, nee postukon sahayam lekonda, nee devanwakken ardhancheskoladu.
But when?
Eppudu?
After baptism.
Bhaptismamutaravata.
Are you finding things difficult to understand?
Ardhancheskoladani kivi kastangaunna.
Maybe you ought to testify in the waters of baptism.
Neevu, ayoka neatibhaptismu, ento, saksimichunnu.
Ah, ichi, ivadam avasram.
Ivardam avasram.
Only then you can understand the word of God.
Appudu maatrame devanwakken ardhancheskoladu.
That is the first blessing.
Adi modhiti ashirvada.
Then secondly.
Rendavdiga.
We read in verse sixteen.
Padaharu vachinulochusannu.
The spirit of God was descending like a love, love and lightning upon him.
Ah, akkada manam chustamo, devani atma powerumalid, tanamidigidigivachadu.
Some, some people preach wrong doctrine through this verse.
Ee, vachinundara, kontamandi, tapurshiddhaantani chukta.
After baptism.
Bhaptisum taravata.
After that only you will get the gift of Holy Spirit.
Ah, bhaptisum taravata maatrame, nee parshuddhatma varan pundutavu.
Otherwise, you are not truly born again.
Ah, lagapotha, nee trijenmichan.
That is not according to the word of God.
And devanwakken sarankadu.
As, as, as soon as you are born again.
Neevu genmints, trijenmichan ventane.
Immediately, the Holy Spirit of God comes to dwell in you.
Ah, parshuddhatma devu, neelo vachin, niwasavair.
But after baptism.
Bhaptismutaravata.
The Holy Spirit of God will be set at liberty to work more effectually in your life.
Nee jeetulodaa mari falavantanga, ba, ba, mari, falavantanga puncheetaniki, parshuddhatma devu, ah, bhaptisum taravata, neekusnadi, neeksa.
Not until you are baptized.
Nu bhaptisandis kudamundukaadu.
Ah, after baptism, you will experience this.
Ah, bhaptisum taravata maatrame dinanubhista.
And then the third blessing.
Moodavashirvada.
Verse seven.
Edu.
Verse seventeen.
Padihedu vachinu.
A voice from heaven was heard.
Ah, paralokamununchi vaka swaram vinpadi.
What is the meaning of this?
Dan ardhaventu?
You will be able to hear the voice of God.
Ah, ipudu, nee devaniyakkaswarani ventavu.
As you are reading the word of God.
Neevu devanwakken sadukavunna.
You will feel as if somebody is speaking to you.
Ah, yavroni etamatlaartanatikni.
Somebody guiding you.
Neen yavronanadipustinatikaradu.
And, and you will be able to hear the very voice of God.
Ah, ipudu devu devaniyattaswarani ventavu.
That is the third blessing.
Moodavashirvada.
So three, four blessings of baptism.
Bhaptisum taravata moodantala, ah, ah, mari, ashirvada.
First of all.
Madhiti.
Ah, the heavenly things, spiritual things will be revealed to you.
Atmasammanamayana paraloka vishalani, bailparshabadta.
Secondly.
Rendavdiga.
There will be effectual working of the Holy Spirit of God in your life.
Parshuddhatma devu, neelo, mari, falavantanga karium madalastadu.
And then thirdly.
Moodavdiga.
Hear the very voice of God.
Neevu devaniswarani ventavu.
So this is, these are the blessings of the baptism.
Ah, bhaptisalo daginattu vanti, ashirvada.
All this put together, what we have been speaking for so long, is the third aspect of the foundation for the habitation of God.
Ah, devani, nivasasthalaanikusambaninchii, moodava, ah, ayoka punadi antantai, bhaptism.
Ah, first of all.
Madhiti.
Repentance.
Pachataapum.
Secondly.[1143.33] All this put together, what we have been speaking for so long, is the third aspect of the foundation for the habitation of God. First of all
First of all
Repentance.
Repentance.
Secondly
Secondly
What is it? Faith.
Faith.
Then thirdly
Then thirdly
The doctrine of baptism.
The doctrine of baptism.
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 So these three things are important.
So these three things are important.
There are three more things which are important.
There are three more things which are important.
You will see that later on this evening. May the Lord give us the grace to understand these important spiritual truths.
May the Lord give us the grace to understand these important spiritual truths.
They are not very difficult.
They are not very difficult.
They are very simple.
They are very simple.
Because they are very simple, we are neglecting them.
Because they are very simple, we are neglecting them.
And because we are neglecting them
And because we are neglecting them
We are becoming spiritually weak.
We are becoming spiritually weak.
We are becoming spiritually poor.
We are becoming spiritually poor.
Poor, poor, daridhartha.
Poor, poor, daridhartha.
And because of that, we are not being built as a habitation of God.
And because of that, we are not being built as a habitation of God.
That's why those who come into our midst Those who come into our midst
Those who come into our midst
They are not able to see the presence of the Lord here.
They are not able to see the presence of the Lord here.
So may the Lord give us the grace to obey his word.
So may the Lord give us the grace to obey his word.
So may the Lord give us the grace to obey his word.
So may the Lord give us the grace to obey his word. Pradhana is concerned, mocharin chandi. Mocharin chandi. Prema galina ma thanri. Parishuddhru vayana ma deva. Yesu krishna vari parishuddha maina naavum peta sthutral chalistho unnam. Ema dhanasamayamulu. Thiruvadina akashamuru ma madhyavunchi. Me paralu kappu sumhassanu manunchi. Ma korakey vidhulachesina twenty. Me jiva vaakkyu manu vati pravava me manustutistho unnam. Devu nee nivasasalamuga. Neemukattavadutaku. Sreshtamayana twenty foundation. Neeru ma korakey. Ma athme maina kshemamu kurukolpuni mitthamai gavana ni tiskochina ndakemi manustutistho unnam. Neer jiva krielana vidichu petti. Maaru mansupundi. Devu nee yendu viswassamunchino varumai. Baptism. Baptism. Ento teetaga. Suutiga. Bahuspashtamuga. Me athma dhvara. Me daasunani siluchatuna maruguparachi. Me rendhistho vachina. Me chakkanishubavartamaanani vati. Stutistho. Ati athma sammanamayana anubhavuto. Thanri baptism pundina tharuvata kalige. Amudantala ashurvadam. Akashamutharuvutta. Athma nimputalaloni kochita. Me swaramunu vinuta. Pravayantho chakkanemugimpu maatalu. Iti anubhavuloni aalaimulopraveshinchuna prativokkaru. Me nivasasalamuga kattavadutaku. Siddhparusturamanupradayipadchu. Parishuddha thanri. Saankala koodikukoraku. Me daasunaki me purodhana shaktini balamuno anugrahinchhi. Ma akkarakaladi meeru meeru maato maatlaardhuramanu vedukuntu. Me sankalponon nenmenschvadinu varandaru me sannidigisamakochivadunatlu saayinchen. Vadekalsamayunuchin meeru maato maatlaardhuruna. Me divyamayana maatalanuvati. Naamatu guknenu maamatu gukmemu. Anvayenchvadinu varame ansaristho. Atthyunathesimhassinasinunaina mimunu. Me swarakthamichikonna sangamulu me nivasasalamuga. Marchvadunatlu siddhparchandi. Me daigaliganasthalakapaginchkuntu. Viswassamuto. Yesu krishna vari prashystamayana naavum peta. Pradeepurukanga stutilapinshi pradhinchhi vedukuntunam ma thanri. Amen. Daiches kuchandi. Chivari pradhana. Aipain tharuvata, mare ochnu varandaru kodha tea snacks yovadhai. Thirighe raatriyedigantlaki, prachayaka koodikilobagunga marla, iraatri kalasamayam. Yedigantlaki prachayaka koodikuntundi. Kabatti, me rhandi, tharuvata, anekulli, me rothiskundravalani, prama porukanga manuchastavunnam. Aderitiga, mare pravujitamai terepu vadeyam, tomidinaragantlaku, aaradanuntundi, kabatti Aaradan korakey, manushiddapadtham.